Yeah, I really want to recommend that you make the Patriot Choir a spokesperson or what are they, you know, to be the goodwill ambassadors for the city Cadillac, because if anybody puts out goodwill, it's them. And now, I'm actually, for my main reason is I'm here to thank Mr. Barnett for bringing forward the issue on the county's animal control. He wanted to not be known for this, but the lady could not find a home for anyone to bring it forward. And again, Mr. Barnett stepped forward with his radio show and started the ball rolling. Now, I cuss Bill on occasion, on more than one occasion, more than one occasion in one year. But I also have to bring forward when I think he does something very worthwhile, because he does do a lot that's worthwhile in spite of the fact that a lot of people try to turn it around and turn it other ways. Not saying that there are some things that get turned the other way, but this one, you know, that's an attaboy and a medal for this. It has started a action and procession of events that should carry us into a different animal control process. I know that the Department of Agriculture and the State Department of Licensing and Regulation are looking at what's going on at the animal shelter. They're having a meeting tonight. In fact, I came from it and they will, they're on the agenda again for the county board on Wednesday. But there wouldn't be anywhere right now someone crying in the wilderness if somebody hadn't put them on the radio. So thank you, Mr. Barnett, for stepping up and again, probably taking more heat than you deserve. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Public comments open at this point. It is requested you limit your time to three minutes. Mr. Beck, good evening. Could you give us your name and address, please?
My name's Terry Beck and I live at 5850 South 49 Road. And with my past practice in FOIA's, et cetera, I've got one here that's got several copies for everybody, so they will not get lost. And I'd like to hand these out.
There's one for you, too. I'll make sure Art gets one.
Yep.
This is a FOIA request of the former city manager, Pete Stalker. I'd like to have a contract copy of his 2007, 2008, and 2009 contract with the city as the city manager. That's all I got to say.
Thank you. Has that been accepted by the city, Marcus, at this point?
I'm not sure if I could say it's been accepted, but certainly under the guidelines, or I shouldn't say guidelines, but the statute that governs FOIA's, we have received the FOIA and we'll begin the process to fulfill it.
Thank you. All right. Public comments are still open. Anyone wishing to come forward? This is your opportunity. We have one at the end as well. Anyone wishing to say anything in public? Okay, we're going to close the public comment. Proceed next to what's entitled the Consent Agenda. And we have three things on there. Council minutes from January 23rd, our regular meeting that happened on a Wednesday night. Next was the Wexford Masaki Great Start request to hang a banner over Mitchell Street from April 11th through the 15th for Month of the Young Child. And finally, a request from the Friends of the Library to hang a banner over Mitchell Street, April 15th through the 22nd, and that's 2013 for National Library Week. Those are our consent agenda items. Could we entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda at this time, please?
I move to approve the consent agenda.
And we have a motion and support. And any discussion about the consent agenda, anyone? Hearing none. Chris, could we please have a roll call?
Councilmembers Spelman?
Yes.
Melama?
Yes.
Shippers?
Yes.
Mayor Barnett?
Yes. Motion carried. Next up are proclamations. We have none of those for this evening. Next up, we have public hearings. We have none of those as well. And we will drop down at that point, or this point, for Scott Hunter of Baird Cotter &amp; Bishop. This is the communications. Chris, could you touch on this as Scott comes forward?
Well, we have a presentation of the annual audit by Scott Hunter of Baird Cotter &amp; Bishop.
Good evening. Hi, Scott. How are you today?
Good. I'm going to kind of go through how the city came out this past year and I'd be happy to answer any question you have after that.
Okay.
Just a reminder, our audit is kind of broken into three different sections. There's a management's discussion analysis. There's a government-wide financial statements. And there's the fund, financial statements. The government-wide financial statements are really reported kind of like a business where we're showing the entire entity as one, you know, one fund. And those statements, we're showing that our assets exceeded our liabilities by about $37.5 million, which represents an increase of $768,000 from the previous year. That's not how you budget the different funds. That's where, if you're making a debt payment, it goes against the liability and we're depreciating all assets. So it's, you know, similar to what a business, how they would report. And it's really useful like bondholders and that. Within our funds, you know, we're broke up between our governmental-type funds, our enterprise and internal service. Our governmental funds is general fund, local, major, streets. Then we have six additional special revenue, eight debt funds, two capital project funds. In total, we, the city accounts for about $15 million in revenue between all our different funds. This past year in our governmental funds, we had an increase in fund balance of $233,000. Bulk of that was from the general fund, where we had an increase of $142,800. Within our major street funds, we had an increase of $84,000 within major and local street funds compared to last year. We had an increase of about $4,000. Our remaining governmental funds, which is the special revenues, capital project debts, we had an increase of our fund balance of about $6,000 compared to last year, was about $19,000. Our enterprise funds, which is for the most part our water and sewer, you know, this past year we had an increase of our net assets of just under $1 million, which is a little deceiving because there was a couple of unique things that happened that are not typical. We had, you know, a big chunk of that had to do with federal and state grants regarding system improvements in wellfields. So our grant revenue shows, hits the bottom line, but our improvements in that hit the balance sheet. So they really don't offset from a, from a one-year snapshot. Our other type of funds are internal service funds, which is our stores and garage, technology, safety. And those had an overall decrease of $148,000 compared to a decrease last year of about $137,000 for about the same between the two years. And I think the bulk of that probably comes within the self-insurance fund as far as where we had the drop. That is just a real quick summary of our different kind of funds and our fund types and how the city came out. I'd be happy to answer any questions you have at this time.
Okay, does anyone from council have any questions of Mr. Hunter?
Overall, the audit went well and everything looks good.
Yes, yep. As far as our general fund, for example, we have a, our overall fund balance is just over $2.1 million, which is about 32% of your budget expenditures. So from that standpoint, you know, our fund balance is, you know, good compared to budget.
Is Mr. Taylor still working over there?
No.
John? Totally retired now.
He's totally retired.
Doesn't even come back for tax time.
Not unless he wants me to help him with them, but.
That's good. He had a long history here, I think, at the county as well. What are the, if you had to give a synopsis of our finances, are we in good shape here or?
Yes, financially, you're in good shape. Like I said, the general fund with a 32% fund balance compared to expenditures is good. Same thing within your enterprise funds. You still have, you know, quite a bit of fund equity there as well.
Okay. No red lights or red something sirens?
Nope.
I'm surprised to see an increase in the general fund balance.
Compared to a year ago, I think a year ago there was additional money that was, that would had to be transferred out of the general fund over to, for the police and fire retirement funding. So I think that was a big, big part of the change from right, compared to prior year.
Anyone with any other questions for Mr. Hunter? Other than, are the Vikings going to win the Big North Conference for the boys?
So far, so good.
Getting closer. Half a game away, I believe. Anyone else? Marcus, or Mike, or Owen? Anything else?
I would just note that a portion of that 32% is restricted.
Right.
So it's not all just available for spending.
Right.
Thank you for the good news.
I just like to temper all the good news as much as I can.
He's the gang.
He's the reality check.
He's the gang.
Meg, if Nancy.
Sorry.
All right. Someone's playing the position. Thank you, Mr. Hunter, for coming tonight.
Ruthy realism.
Positive, we're looking for positive, Pete. That's what we're looking for. Well, I think that does it for you over there, Chris. That was short for communications tonight. Going to get on to some other festivities next. And I think, Mr. Petcha, I'm going to set it over to you at this point because it looks like city manager's report is next.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of the city council. I'm going to try not to steal too much thunder. Vicky Essenmacher, I see you are here this evening and thank you very much for coming. This evening, the council is being asked to essentially allow the locations for the Friends of the Libraries Sculpture Event. This is not necessarily a repeat of last year and I'm sure Vicky will explain a little bit more about that. But essentially, what we're looking for council to approve is give the staff the ability of authorizing the specific locations for the placement of the sculptures. And we are, another condition would be to make sure that the liability insurance covering the damage to the sculptures will be provided by the Seward Johnson Sculpture Foundation with the city held harmless for all damage claims. Mr. Mayor, I know you yourself may have a couple of comments on this as well. I'm not sure if you wanted to do that first or have Mrs. Essenmacher come forward.
Let's go ahead and maybe just have her, hear from her and we have a vote and we'll go from there if that would work.
This is an opportunity, if you'd like, to talk to us about the planned event.
Could you give us your name and address, please?
Vicky Essenmacher, 204 Locust Lane. And I represent the Friends of the Library. And because of the overwhelming success last year of the sculptures, we tried and succeeded in getting them back. We're just in the process of raising funds for that and getting your permission to bring them back.
And you did whining and grovelling to get them back?
That's what it said. Yeah, many emails and many phone calls.
Persistent. You were persistent?
That's what it takes, I guess.
How did you think the first year worked out?
It was wonderful. Yeah, I think everyone would agree with that. Yeah, it was wonderful.
All right. Well, thanks for coming back again. Okay, don't go too far. Council?
I'd love to make a motion to approve the display of Seward Johnson sculptures on city grounds this summer.
Motion to approve display of Seward Johnson sculptures.
And I'd be delighted to support that.
Would that, would those both be during the months of June, July, and August, by chance? Okay.
And how can people donate to this?
They can donate by making checks out to Friends of the Library and sending it to 204 Locust Lane, Cadillac, Michigan, 49601.
Locust Lane? Are you technically in the city then? By about a block or no?
No.
All right.
Does that make a difference?
It does not. We're going to make sure you can get in.
The gate's still open.
Because I could change that. I'll give you a different address.
No, 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 that's fine. Take our sculptures away.
It just shows our neighbors are friends, too. Okay. Don't go too far. We have a motion and support. Any other discussion? Hearing none. And stay right where you are, if you would, please. Vicky, can we have a vote for this, please, Chris?
Councilmember Melama?
Yes.
Shippers?
Yes.
Spelman?
Yes.
Mayor Barnett?
Yes. And that would mean that the motion is carried. Wonder if you could come over, Vicky? I have to talk to you for a second and shake your hand. Did anybody bring a camera, by the way, tonight?
I, there.
Antonio's in the house. I want to introduce. Do you mind standing up for a second, Antonio? This is Antonio Coleman?
Yep.
All right. And he's a new employee, relatively new from the TV, excuse me, Cadillac news.
Vicky is our president. Can I have this one?
Somebody take a lens off here. It's a long lens. You won't see it there.
Okay, you got a long lens. I don't want to hear that.
Picture of nose hairs.
You a Vicky Long?
I am.
All right. Well, thank you for coming up.
Thank you.
And we've decided because
Bill and Vicky.
Vicky Essenmacher, Essenmacher. Is that better?
That's right.
It took twice. Vicky Essenmacher is the vice president and coordinator for the Friends of the Library. She was instrumental in bringing 11 realistic bronze figures by internationally renowned sculptor Jay Seward Johnson to Cadillac during the summer of 2012. His lifelike statues, which were displayed in the core downtown, the city park, and other locations, brought tremendous enjoyment and cultural enrichment to this city, the residents, and the guests of the general Cadillac regional area. In fact, it brought in people from all over the state and maybe the country as well. And every time I went by one of these, someone had a camera for the most part. And we brought thousands of people in by working together with your idea and the idea of the Friends of the Library. On behalf of the city, therefore, we are graciously and graciously thanking Ms. Essenmacher and the Friends of the Library for their dedication and tireless effort in making Cadillac, Michigan, an even greater place in which to live and to visit and to enjoy statues. And we just heard they're coming in again and we decided to put our hands together and give a nice award which is known as Key to the City of Cadillac. And it reads, "Key to the City of Cadillac, presented to Vicky Essenmacher, Friends of the Library Vice President and Program Coordinator, February 4th, 2013, for being instrumental in bringing the Jay Seward Johnson sculptures to Cadillac. Signed, William S. Barnett, Mayor." And I'm pretty sure it opens something. Would you like to say, is Vicky Long?
Yeah, she's our president.
No, this was all Vicky's baby. All I did was support her and did some of the marketing for the program. But this was
She's a big help.
This was her idea, so.
Okay. Well, this was a big surprise, hopefully. We saw this coming through on the agenda and there was a movement that had to be done. It's based on your work and the gift that you gave our community last year and all the people that donated gave that gift as well. But you had spearheaded this. And now that you, we know you live just outside the city, that should help.
Get in that gate.
I promise not to charge you.
Insurance fee.
I think he will hit you in if it comes down to that someday.
There you go.
Well, we look forward to another good summer with the sculptures.
Yay.
To thank staff, they also put that together. Vicky, do you want to put this, this actual travel?
No, I'll keep a gate.
All right. We'll leave that for the other council member. Marcus, thanks for short, on short notice. And please thank the staff for that as well. And that is a well-deserved reward.
My pleasure.
The gift that keeps giving. Okay. We have a piano teacher from the '60s in the house today. Dolores Falsk is here. And why don't you come on up, Dolores? You wrote us a delightful letter and you have some guests with you tonight. We could almost just break out in a tune here, but that will, if you would like to encourage them, I'm sure they might sing. But Dolores, would you mind giving us your name and address, please?
My name is Dolores Falsk and I live at 318 North Simon Street, Cadillac.
All right. Well, thanks for coming this evening. Do you have something for us?
Yes, I had written a letter asking that the city consider making the Patriot Choir Cadillac's own special goodwill ambassadors because they are spreading goodwill all over the state and they're going to be going to Washington, DC. And we want to let them to know that this is our people that really spread a lot of good cheer for Cadillac.
Okay. Marcus, I didn't mean to take away your thunder. I recognize this is still the city manager's report.
That's quite all right.
We're just all real excited about this one stuff.
We have, we have good items this evening.
Yeah, we've had several good items so far, some of which
Ms. Falsk, you hit it on the nail. They're here to ask to have council support as being goodwill ambassadors for the city as they travel to Washington and perhaps to some other places.
We hope, we hope that's just the beginning.
That's right.
And do you have some of the Patriots with you this evening?
We have them, but to name everybody that's here that has come, I would have to ask Barb Karp, who has been there, then Barb and Bonnie, led them from the beginning and are the ones that are usually responsible for this whole foyer.
Okay.
Okay, you want me to introduce the group?
Yes, why don't we just all sit down? And I'll have her, have you stand up one at a time. And they're going to have a camera over here. Jed's going to put you on. Is that Bonnie Salmon, Salmon?
Salmon.
Okay. You want to come forward?
May I come forward?
Sure. Yeah, you don't, I hate that part, too, but there's a mic right there. Yep. Would you mind just going around the room and introducing the Patriots and possibly other folks that are here tonight, supporting them? They're either their folks or your counterpart in the program.
This is Joel Nichols. Leonard.
Hi, Leonard.
I pronounce his last name sometimes. Barbara's my, Barbara's the director and I am just the leader. So Barb Karp, Ms. Chris.
Hi, Chris.
Rogers. Danielle Reilly. Let me see, where am I?
Mike's in the front.
Oh, Mike Kefner.
Hi, Mike.
Lisa. JP. Alice. Is that everybody?
Frank.
Where's Frank? Oh, where is Frank? And Frank.
Hi, Frank.
And then Judy, our assistant.
And then we have, there's Sue Schuster, who helps us with the group.
Right.
Brenda. And there's Don Thursday back there.
Dallas.
And Judy's husband, Ed.
Who was the last one? Okay, yep.
She's helping us get ready for the trip to Washington. She's been a big asset to us there, so. And we got Barb. Oh, Barb.
Leonard's mother, all right. Elvis is in the house.
There's Elvis, I'm right on.
Just give me just a second here. Okay, well--
Can I make one more?
Absolutely, come on up, Dolores. What else would you like us to know?
If they're appointed, I would like them to have some kind of a patch that they can have on their jackets, sewn their jackets to announce to the whole world that they are Cadillac's goodwill ambassadors.
You think we could assist in something like that, Marcus?
I think so.
Yay.
Okay. Well, this is an exciting evening. I don't recall us ever appointing a group of goodwill ambassadors, and if we were ever to do that, I could think of no group other than this one to have that title, because even as Mr. McCready had talked to me before, he knows of no other group that spreads more goodwill than our patriots are from this town. And they're here in the house tonight. Some of you work for the city, have done some watering. I see some of you at basketball games or playing Elvis in the recent musical. And Facebook and so forth. Thank you for being in our community and giving everything you folks have back to us, because it's important, and we appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Would you like to say something? Come on up. Is that, this is Leonard's mother, by the way.
Yes.
Barb?
I'm--
Would you just give us your name and your--
My name is Barbara Ann Kaczynski, and I live on Everett Street in Cadillac, and Leonard is my son. I just want you to know how much work these volunteer people put into doing this for our kids. It's hours and hours of donated volunteer time, no pay, just out of the goodness of their heart, and it means so much to each and every one of them. And it means a lot to me to, to give my son something to look forward to every week and to have kind of a purpose to be in this, this group, because they do a very good job. And so I just want to thank them very much.
Okay, so we're going to get to business now, and are we all set, Dolores? Any other things you'd want us to know? You're taking a trip to Washington, D.C.?
Probably somebody else is more, can tell more about it than I do.
The plan is to, that we're going to go in September.
Thanks, Barb.
We're going to go in September to Washington, D.C. We're in the process of trying to earn funds. The choir itself has been raking leaves and cutting wood and any other little jobs, saving pop cans. And then there's been a lot of companies that have made donations and a lot of just general folks that come to the concerts that have been willing to help, so. Anyway, that's what we're trying to do. Actually, Deb Bore came up with the idea. It was her idea in the first place.
Thanks, Deb.
So she happened to see the choir, we were on a billboard that we were in concert, and she stopped at that church to hear us. She said she'd never heard us, and then she had just come back from Washington. So she said, boy, this would be a great thing, and from there it just kind of took off. So we want to thank the Cadillac people for supporting us, because without that, we wouldn't be able to do anything, so.
When is Elvis coming to town?
Elvis has left the building.
Elvis lost the building right now.
We need a concert. You better. We need a concert to raise money.
We will be doing a concert. We will, we're doing a couple of fundraisers ourselves to raise money to go, so.
Great, okay, well, keep us up to date with what's happening, and we'll be happy to help you. Let's go ahead and take action on this. I'm going to maybe ask the group to come up for a picture after this passes, which I'm going to have a pretty good hunch that it will. But we would entertain a motion at this point, and any other discussion council may have with regard to appointing the Patriot Choir as goodwill ambassadors.
I would like to very happily make a motion to appoint the Patriot Choir as Cadillac's goodwill ambassadors, and to include in that facilitating a patch to that effect for each of the choir members and their support team.
Support.
Okay, we have a motion in support. That means we're halfway home. Anyone else wish to have any comments? T.I. was asking for a song earlier, so--
Would you--
Start getting your lyrics together in your head. Sherry, anything tonight on this?
No, I'm just enjoying all the fun out here.
And the love in the room.
Yeah.
And they've got talent, is what it is, as well as hard. Mr. Councilmember Malama?
No, just pleased to support that, and that's such a great thing to represent our community. I've heard the group, and they're excellent. Being a former educator, I remember Leonard. I don't know if he remembers me, but I remember him at the Career Tech Center, so.
I've been there for 25 years.
Yeah, it's almost as long as I was there.
I haven't moved on yet when I'm on the radio, too.
Yep, yep.
Joel's one of my assistants in the Viking Games. Makes more sense than I do, usually.
I'm not surprised.
Marcus, do you have anything you'd like to share from the city manager's perspective?
A great opportunity, and certainly looking forward to supporting it how we can.
And Mr. Homier, no legal impediments having been shown?
No, I'm not going to poison any.
Okay, with that, any other discussion? Hearing none. Chris, could we please have a yes or no vote from everyone?
Councilmember Malama?
Yes.
Shippers?
Yes.
Bowman?
Yes.
Mayor Barnett?
Yes, motion carried. Congratulations. I think you're one of the first, if not the first, group of ambassadors, goodwill ambassadors for the city of Cadillac, so congratulations to the Patriot Choir.
Can I, is it, is there a song or a chorus of a song or something that you would sing for us, please?
Come on, Bob, you direct them.
Will you direct them to sing one song?
Well--
We'd love to hear one song. Come on up front, in front of us, and face the cameras and do a song.
Why don't you guys all come up and face the crowd? That'll be--
Are we back here?
You're fine where you are.
You can stand in front of us.
Yes, absolutely.
Are they, are they in the right spot?
They're perfect.
All right, we're going to sing "This Little Light of Mine," since this is such an opportunity for us, and we do want to shine our light, so.
Yes.
So, okay, guys?
Yeah. Without music.
All right.
A cappella.
(singing) This little light of mine, I'm gonna let it shine, shine, shine. This little light of mine, I'm gonna let it shine, let it shine, let it shine, let it shine.
Bravo.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for all your reference.
You do so good.
Thanks, Frank.
Thank you.
Well, that wasn't me singing, Frank.
Thank you very much. Next mayor of Cadillac, right there. All right, Chris.
I want to be sure of one thing, that says the Patriots--
That was great.
--have to pick that ass.
It was.
Yes.
Good thing you-- Thank you.
--said so the Patriots play, but we want to not have--
Good job, thanks.
Thank you.
Yes, dear. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Thanks for coming.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you very much.
Thanks for coming. Thanks for coming.
Have a good time.
Thanks for coming.
That's nice to know.
Thanks a lot for coming. Thank you, appreciate your work here.
Thank you.
Thank you, good job.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming. All right. Thank you. We caught you. Yeah.
Hi, Don, thanks for coming. You got a, that's quite an applause there.
Thank you, thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you for coming.
Thanks for coming. Good seeing you.
Thanks.
Always my assets. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thanks a lot, thanks for your help.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Makes everything else seem not very important, doesn't it?
Thank you so much for coming.
Thank you for coming.
Thanks for coming, thank you. I'll reach you, baby.
I guess we proved that there was, there were no lip syncing, no lip syncing was going on.
No lip syncing.
I put it out to that rumor.
Sounds like what I do all day, every day.
We have the next, the C, remember we added--
Oh, yes, yeah, I forgot.
I'm going to call up the next item. Thank you, everybody, for your indulgence and patience. We're going to move to the next item on the city manager's report. Marcus, what's up for us next?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. The next item we added earlier this evening, item C, would be to set a public hearing for 7:00, or rather, at our 7:00 meeting on Monday, February 18th, regarding our capital improvement program preliminary budget.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to set the public hearing, our next meeting, February 18th, for the capital improvement project.
Support. Motion in support for the CIP hearing at our next, is it the next, what date again, Marcus?
February 18th.
That is our next meeting.
Which is also present today, but we do meet.
We meet on present.
Okay, any discussion? Hearing none. Could we please have a roll call for the CIP hearing?
Councilmember Shippers?
Yes.
Bowman?
Yes.
Malama?
Yes.
Mayor Barnett?
Yes. Motion carried. Next up, introduction of ordinances and resolutions, Marcus.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of the city council. This next item is to set a public hearing regarding an ordinance that amends the zoning map, and the public hearing would be set for March 4, 2013. Jerry Adams does have a map that he'll briefly walk us through. This is very, very similar to what city council has approved in the past with respect to this type of approval. This will benefit the Don's Auto Clinic and Cadillac. They have acquired another parcel, and it needs to be rezoned accordingly to accommodate their needs.
Hello, Mr. Adams.
I don't have a formal presentation tonight. I will make one at the March meeting, but you can see the parcel of property in question. It's denoted by the yellow box or the yellow line. You may recall about, I think it was three months ago or so, you rezoned the parcel to B3 that is immediately north of this parcel. And so essentially, you're going to be dealing with a lot of the same issues, or a lot of the same facts, I should say, are going to surface for this parcel that surfaced toward the 1 to the north as well. And under a rezoning, it's a two-step process. The first step is a public hearing before the planning commission. That has occurred, and the planning commission unanimously recommends the rezoning of this parcel from RMH to the B3 that's been passed on to you. And there was a public hearing, by the way, associated with, with that action, and you'll also be conducting another public hearing. And again, on the night of March 4, we'll have a more complete presentation, along with the applicant will be present as well. Tonight, all you're doing is setting a public hearing.
All right, thank you very much, Jerry.
I'll make that motion to set a public hearing for March 4, 2013, to consider an ordinance to amend the city zoning map.
Support.
There's a motion in support, any discussion? Hearing none, we'll have a roll call vote to set this. Chris?
Councilmember Bowman?
Yes.
Malama?
Yes.
Shippers?
Yes.
Mayor Barnett?
Yes, motion carried. Next up, we have a couple of things under adoption of ordinances and resolutions. Mr. Petchik, can I go to you for these?
Yes, sure. The next item is the request for the adoption of a resolution for the division of planted lots, creating two buildable lots located at 610 Chestnut Street. I believe that is, yes, that is the map that shows it. The property is currently owned by a single absentee land owner, property owner. They have requested the separation of the lots to create two buildable areas. And discussing with Jerry Adams previously to tonight, he had mentioned that, in fact, I believe they could be split actually into three buildable lots, but that's not what the request is before you this evening. And the recommendation this evening is to adopt the resolution that would approve the division of the planted lots, creating two buildable lots at 610 Chestnut.
And this is one that already went to the planning commission also?
That's correct, and the planning commission unanimously recommends the division. The planning commission's recommendation essentially was based on two factors. One, this property, as well as the immediate neighborhood, is zoned R2 residential. Both of these lots will be consistent with the R2 zoning. And then, secondly, the lots that will be created are equal to or greater in size than that of the surrounding lots in the neighborhood. So they're very consistent with what's happening in the general neighborhood.
It's right across from the football field, for those of you at home, and it's right on Chestnut, that open field, right, I talked to the school, trying to, the owner, I knew the owner, I still do, Dave Thompson, who's from Texas. They just were looking to get rid of it, and they've split it into what looks to be a more marketable setup, so good luck to them. I think this makes sense, and that would be nice parking for the football games when people are parked on all the way around the neighborhoods for blocks. But I'm sure that their money was short then, and probably still is today. Anyway--
More so.
More so, yeah. Okay, any, could we have a motion on this?
Make a motion to adopt the resolution to approve the division of the planted lots, creating two buildable lots at 610 Chestnut Street.
Thank you, is there support for that?
Or--
Any discussion? I'll just say that it passed unanimously at the planning commission meeting recently.
Yeah, this parcel's been vacant for a few years now.
And it actually, it was previously owned by Doris Thompson, who worked in our water department for 40-plus years, who's now deceased, and she had, I believe, at least three kids, and Davy's one of them. So there's a little city history for you there. Okay, anything else?
Does it?
Something about perennials. Chris, could we have a vote, please?
Councilmember Malama?
Yes.
Shippers?
Yes.
Bowman?
Yes.
Mayor Barnett?
Yes. See, my wife can hear those things at home, she starts thinking, summer.
Yeah, I was noticing the map has got green and leaves and, anyway, trees. We're halfway, we're halfway, halfway between the solstice and the vernal equinox, so hang in there.
All right, that's why it's warming up, and we actually had sun coming in here tonight at 6:40, five, what was it, 5:15?
5:15.
Yeah. Next up, Mr. Petchik.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. This next item is a resolution of support regarding the Lakefront Park Project grant agreement. I'll give you the quick background in just a moment, but the requested action this evening is for council to approve the resolution that essentially certifies that the city will comply with the Michigan Department of Natural Resources requirements pursuant to the execution of the grant agreement for the Lakefront Park Project, as funded under the Recreation Passport Grant Program, and basically to authorize the city mayor and clerk accordingly to sign the, to sign off on it. This is the project that about a year or so ago, we weren't quite sure if we were going to be able to do. We had originally talked about it as a part of a capital improvements program council work session, where this was sort of a nice-to-have program. We didn't have the funding available, and we had said that, that there are some, or there was a grant opportunity, and if we should be so lucky, that this would be something we'd love to do. Council did, did bless it, and back in March of 2012, the city did file a grant application with the M D N R accordingly, and we were successful in obtaining a $45,000 grant. We do have some matching funds that, that will, that are budgeted, that will be applied towards it in the amount of $15,000. The local match is also not just cash, but labor as well. But at this time, we do need, we do need the council's support to further the project along with the consideration of the resolution. And Jerry, I'm not sure if there's anything you wanted to add to that, but--
No, it's, what's happening is that the D N R, as part of their grant programs now, are requiring communities to essentially actually submit an agreement saying, we've awarded you the money, will you comply? And so it's really just an indication that we will, in fact, comply with the grant agreement and follow through with the program based on what's been awarded.
Okay, good job.
I'd like-- To let you make a motion. All right, I would like to make a motion to adopt a resolution of support of the Lakefront Park Project agreement and to authorize the mayor and city clerk to sign the agreement.
Thank you. Is there support to--
Support.
You'd like to support? Okay, we have support and a motion, and a motion in support, in no particular order. Speaking of, anybody wish to discuss further the continued good news that we've received a $45,000 grant from the state, the D N R, and would like to thank them formally for that at this time, and looks like we're going through our formal steps here as well.
What's the timeline on this, Jerry?
This spring, so it'll be completed this year.
That's so exciting. And this is the universally accessible--
Yes.
--playground? I think this is going to be really popular. We might have a parking problem.
Parking problems are a good thing.
The other, if I, if I may, just add as well, I'm not entirely sure if swings are part of what is now defined as a universally handicapped accessible playground, and I do know that swings are a very popular amenity that's current, that's currently there. And I do know that swings are a very popular amenity that's currently there. What exactly does that mean? I don't know. It might mean that we move the swings...
Now that you brought it up.
Right, now that I brought it up, it might mean that we need to move the swings to another location along the lakefront, but we might need to remove them from that precise location in order to accommodate the type of equipment that is being essentially mandated through this grant process.
They, I know that they do have, it's a swing per se, but not like the swing set that we have there.
I don't want to venture on the age of that swing set, but it is somewhat old and in need of some...
And a really nice swing set. The other comment that I want to make, and I'm sure that others have observed this as well, but, you know, when the weather's really hot outside, I see a large number of people actually walking from their homes in the city down to that area. A lot of young families, a lot of strollers, a lot of wagons, and that type of thing. And so, you're right, we might not have a parking problem, but we certainly then have some other safety concerns related to making sure we get pedestrians over there safely. Just something to keep in mind.
Okay, anything else? Hearing nothing else. Chris, could we have a roll call?
Councilmember Melama?
Yes.
Shippers?
Yes.
Bowman?
Yes.
Mayor Barnett?
Yes. Motion carried. Thank you, council. No reports of boards and commissions, or minutes of boards and commissions. I take that back. We do have the airport authority as far as minutes, the planning commission and the DDA. Anything from those meetings, Marcus, or minutes, rather, that are noteworthy for the council and the public this evening?
Not this evening, this mayor.
All right. So next will be our public comment portion of the meeting. And again, anyone wishing to speak at this point, on behalf of the public, feel free to step forward. We do like to request the comment time be limited to three minutes. Anyone wishing to come forward should do so at this time. Or forever hold their peace, that will take it...
Please till the next meeting.
Seeing no one come forward, we're going to close public comment. Any tabled items, Mr. Petcher?
Not tonight.
All right, we'll proceed next to good of the order, starting with Mr. Petcher, and we'll come back to you as needed.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. Just some quick kudos to staff for all of their assistance with the NASF event. I know that we had quite a nice turnout. We had our fire guys out helping with the polar dip. Certainly kudos to Captain Matt Wolfile for jumping in, or as the videos on YouTube will show, he was pushed in by fellow officers. I'm going to try to get a link, and I'll share it accordingly, but quite a sight to see. Also, as previously discussed, with respect to our CIP, I would like to ask council to consider a work session at 6:00 on the 18th of February to meet again, just to go through the document one last time, as we didn't have full council this evening.
Okay. Marcus, I have been contacted by a number of citizens regarding the animal control. Could you just quickly define what the city's role in this is, if any?
Well, I would say with respect to our role, I don't believe we have one at this time. With respect to position, certainly that's something that city council, if they so choose to discuss publicly about, can do so. Certainly, I would advise that it's a very concerning issue with respect to the allegations that were presented. It's my understanding that two state agencies are currently investigating those allegations, and certainly I'm interested to learn what the results of those two investigations will be.
And that's a county-run facility?
It is.
And program?
Yes.
All right. Thank you for that clarification. Mr. Councilmember Melama, excuse me?
Just a couple announcements. February 12th, our Manufacturers Association will be going to Cadillac Casting, and they are one of our largest employers and are doing very, very well. They have 470 employees and are doing excellent. Also, in March, we will have the State of Affairs, or the city's finances, or whatever we call that, where we take a look...
City update.
City update, that's it. That's the word I was looking for. And we're also going to have that at the city complex, and we're going to ask our manufacturers, we haven't done this in a couple of years, to bring the layouts of their facilities so that we know if any layouts have changed for the fire inspector, or if any new chemicals have been brought into production, so that we have an update on our manufacturers, so that we're better prepared for any type of emergency. And the other thing is, is our town hall meeting, which will be at CTC, will be in February, but I do not have a date yet. It has not been set by University of Michigan yet.
Thank you. Councilmember Spelman?
Just quickly, it's that time of year where the, I'm on the Rotary Cultural Arts Committee, I'm the chairperson, and we start to look at what events we might have at the pavilion in the summer. And so if anyone has any performing arts type of groups that you're interested in having there, you can contact me, and I will take that information or that request to the committee for consideration.
Thank you. Councilmember Shippers, thanks for being patient and polite.
Thanks.
And encouraging a song earlier.
Yes, this was just a delightful evening here. I love the celebration of the arts. I want to thank staff and Mayor Barnett for giving the key to the Friends of the Library, the key to the city, to the Friends of the Library. I think that was a wonderful gesture. I'm glad we have the kind of goodwill ambassadors that we now have. I'm glad that our fiscal house is in order, and we won't be getting a knock on our door from the governor's office anytime soon. And I'm also glad for all the events happening in Cadillac, celebrating arts this weekend is another Gopher Wood concert on Saturday night. Orpheum Bell, a world-renowned performing arts group, will be performing Saturday night right in downtown Cadillac. And other than that, we're halfway to spring, so...
Are you the groundhog today, tonight?
That was yesterday, or Saturday was the in-between.
Did he see his shadow or not?
You know, I don't know. I don't know.
We'll have to look that up. Plan accordingly.
Whether he sees his shadow or not, we've got a long haul till the weather breaks up here, but...
Okay. I attended the NASF this weekend, and Sheila Mansfield received another key to the city for her work with the pageant, and we have a longstanding agreement with NASF that they help us select a citizen that's worthy of receiving it with their efforts of goodwill. In this case, it was Sheila, who has, since '09, worked on the pageant, improved it, made things more representative of Cadillac, is how they're putting it, and she's a very worthy candidate, someone who served our country as well in her life. So congratulations to Sheila. I'd like to thank the volunteers of the NASF as well that worked hard to put the program on, and it looked like another successful celebration of snow, and it looked like, turns out, we had some snow, and just enough to have it work and to have a hole cut in the ice for our volunteers that apparently weren't real willing to jump in, or is that part of the act to get the rest of the team up there?
Maybe part of the...
A little of both, maybe. All right. Well, congratulations on our captain for taking the plunge, and for a good cause for Oasis and the Women's Resource Center. With that, I don't have anything else. I am going to flop it over, or re-flop to Marcus, speaking of belly dives or so forth.
He took that plunge in the first year.
Yeah, you haven't really volunteered again. Is there a problem with that?
You know, it's one of those things that you try to do once...
Oh, it's on your bucket list.
Once is enough.
Once was a great experience. I did contribute to the cause this year, and it was happy to see someone else jump instead of me, so...
Yeah.
But thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. The last item that we did add to our agenda this evening would be for council to consider adjourning into a closed session for the purposes of discussing a written legal opinion with the city attorney.
Could we entertain a motion, an appropriate motion to do that?
I move that we go into closed session for the purpose of hearing a written opinion from the city attorney, a written legal opinion from the city attorney.
Okay. We have motion to go into closed session for that purpose, and support. Any discussion? Hearing none. Chris, could we please have a roll call?
Councilmember Shippers?
Yes.
Bowman?
Yes.
Melama?
Yes.
Mayor Barnett?
Yes. Motion carried, and off we go. We'll be back. All right, we're back on. Let's have a motion to get back into open session, please.
I move to return to open session. Support.
There's a motion in support. Chris, please.
Councilmember Spelman?
Yes.
Melama?
Yes.
Shippers?
Yes.
Mayor Barnett?
Yes. Motion carried, four zip. And we just completed a closed session, and I don't believe we have anything on that. Is that correct?
Not at this time, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. We did make one error. Marcus, you wanted to talk about a special meeting or a work session?
Yes, I brought it up, but we forgot to see if council was going to approve that. Special meeting for 6:00 on the 18th to continue the CIP discussion.
Okay. We'll make sure that gets handled and set up appropriately with either a letter from the mayor or whatever it takes. All right. So anything else from council? Hearing no, nothing. We're going to hear the happy-nosed meeting adjourned.